All the orders, the Westlake City Schools. Monday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Board of Education work session. Roll call, Mr. Hopkins.
Stoll.
Here.
Kraft here. Newkin here. Zinski.
Here.
Here not.
Here.
We can now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to repose in the wishes stands on nation and the God invisible with liberty and justice for all. I have a motion and a second for approval of the agenda.
So move.
But it's.
Roll call.
Yeah. You're not?
Yes.
Newkin?
Yes.
Zinski?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up, we have Board Committee reports. The first one is Legislative Liaison.
There's a couple things keeping an eye on. That are in the safe house potentially and really we've done some of that from great. Nothing's going on yet, but.
Okay. Next up is Student Achievement.
Student Achievement, we're happy as a district as we settle into this two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year with a successful all-in open with our layered strategies to keep us all in. Thank you to all of our staff. Thanks to our students. Thanks to our families for your hard work, collaboration, diligence, patience, openness, and understanding. We celebrate the broadcast team of Alan Wiley and Johnny Kilroy, the broadcast team for Westlake High School. That was quite a feature on Fox eight. I think we all had an opportunity to see it. We congratulate you and we wish you continued success. Many of us had the opportunity over the weekend to remember September the eleventh, two thousand and one. We will always celebrate the achievements of Christina Sangha Rook. Many of us had a chance to remember her and many others who lost their lives, suffered in countless ways, and served our country from September eleventh, two thousand and one through this very day. Christina Sangha Rook, we remember you, we love you, and we will never forget. We celebrate the achievements of our current students and alumni, especially this week, homecoming week. In a special way, we honor our Hall of Fame inductees Lisa Schuett Downing and Frank Sarno. We'll gather later this week to celebrate them and our two thousand and twenty Hall of Fame inductees Vern Long, Dr. Jean Bishop, Bonnie Bauer Morris, and the two thousand and one Girls Golf Team. Thank you.
Next up is Policy Committee. You have no report. Thank you. Finance Audit.
We had a, we had a brief meeting. Well, on the. I mean, the scope of the project revised. So. Second, revised, so what the project. I think that's really gonna be. Complimentation.
Mr. Hopkins, our meeting, we have scheduled next week. Can you remind us of the time and the day?
You know, I know you're gonna ask that and I don't. I have written down in my office and I'll set it out tonight or tomorrow morning.
Great.
I apologize. We did it. Our last board meeting schedule for next week and was Tuesday? Tuesday, four thirty.
Thank you.
Four one five? Tuesday will be the twenty-first and we'll do four fifteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on finance?
No.
Next up is Curriculum Committee.
We're in the process of getting our three dates together. We just got the email from Kathy and so well, when we can all agree on one, we'll be visiting the schools separately. So. Sometime after.
And finally, Community Outreach Committee.
I know a number of us have been reaching out to the committee. If you have something you'd like to share with this meeting, feel free. I know, for example, you attended a number of the September eleventh events.
I went to the September eleventh. Memorial. Westlake High School on Friday morning where the part saying is they did a great job bringing Cook's family in to the library and then live streaming across the high school and the choir performed there. And then there was another dedication on Saturday at Evergreen Cemetery and then they surprised the family with a bench at Tri-City Park and Mr. Wilson said some wonderful words there. The families donated, just so you know, a hundred thousand dollars of college scholarships to Westlake High School grads who went to University of Michigan.
Amazing.
Over the time. They just figured out those numbers and that's astonishing. Put all those right all together. Went to a volleyball game the last week and if you've not had an opportunity to see our volleyball team, they are doing really well. And then Friday night football game, which was in the second win in a row at home. So this Friday will be fun.
Excellent. Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
All right. Next up is Board Discussion Items. The first item is the Dover Campus Discussion.
I'll get started with that real quick.
You're gonna start?
Yep. Thanks for the opportunity to meet tonight. I want to say thank you to Mr. Kosebar for joining us here tonight. We've spoken, as Mr. Newkin had mentioned, initially within our Finance Committee meeting and then had briefly spoke to everyone individually, but with the Dover campus and how this has evolved. And Mr. Kosebar is gonna go into a little more detail here a bit on this, but as a reminder, the Dover campus is, we're talking specifically about the traffic pattern and traffic on Bassett Road and Dover Center Road, the entrances, those two entrances. So I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Kosebar and I know we have some slides to put up, so I'll work on getting that up.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Just to refresh everybody, we're gonna go ahead and put up the plan that was submitted to the Planning Commission at the August second meeting. This plan was developed with GPD, our engineering and architectural firm. Dr. Goggan had also met with our neighbors on Bassett Road back in the middle of July to try to get as much input into a design that we feel could help resolve some of our safety issues with buses in the front of the property and with traffic on both Bassett and Dover Center Road. What I'll do is walk you through this original plan that we had taken to the Planning Commission just to orient you. This is Dover Center Road down here. The Lee Bernisson Middle School will be right here where my hand is, right up over here will be Dover Intermediate School. And then Bassett Road is running along the bottom of the screen. In this plan, we were recommending to have a separate bus lot come directly off of Dover Center Road, separated from the asphalt parking lot and roadways that are currently on site. This was taking the place of the location where Dover Elementary School is located. In this scheme, parents would occupy the front of these two properties for Dover Intermediate School. Dover Intermediate School staff would be parking in the main front parking lot. Cars would come in, stack up along the north parking lot, and then pull up to the front of the building to both drop off and pick up children. After they hit the children, they come back out through the parking lot, back to the light that's currently on Dover Center Road. In our back of our property, Bassett Road would be the main access point then for the children, parents coming in to pick up and drop off. So this is broken up in two sections. This is Bassett Road. There was a plan to be automated gate here. The parents would come in, come into the property in the back of Bernisson, drop off along the back, and then come back out onto Bassett Road. The parking in the back of the property would also be for the staff of Bernisson Middle School. Since August eighth, since August the second, we had gotten some hard numbers for the project from Icon Construction. And Todd, if we pull up the second print, please. And the numbers that came in were drastically higher than what was estimated at the beginning of our discussion almost a half a year to a year ago. The number for this design was one point one five two billion dollars. They were originally estimating it would be somewhere in the four hundred to five hundred thousand dollar range. When asked them about why the change in this, a lot of it was the increased cost in construction, materials and labor had a lot to do with it over this past year. Also, what's called the project scope creep as you start to design, you get input from city officials and building requirements, additional lighting, buffering, things like that, that just all of a sudden start to add to the main project that you're looking at. So this number obviously was very high to us concerning. When we started to look at this, we thought that the best course of action would be to go back to GPD and to take a look at another way to solve our safety and traffic issues. If you remember, Dr. Goggan had said we've been through, I think, scheme number five or six on this project. We'll call this maybe scheme number seven. In working with GPD, we believe we found a way to lower this cost and to make it a little bit easier to implement. Todd, next one, please. This was what was developed in two phases. The first phase, again, to orient you as to what you're looking at here, this down here now is Dover Center Road. This is the north parking lot with Dover Intermediate School here, Lee Bernisson Middle School up here, and this would be the area where the bus parking lot was proposed. In this scheme, we would take this whole curved front entrance that separates our current bus and parking lot. In here, we would add ornamental fencing and we would extend sidewalk that is currently not there because there's parking. Now, why would we want to do this? The ornamental fencing in the sidewalk could create a nice lane for cars to drop off against this sidewalk, funnel the children to one of two crosswalks that would be monitored by our staff and leading to the buildings. What we have right now in the front with our buses and with an open space from the parking lot are parents and children that cross anywhere out of the buildings to their parents' vehicles. Obviously, one of our bigger safety concerns is that we want to try to solve. In here, right now, we do have some handicap parking, some safety vehicle parking. This would just be relocated out onto our current asphalt parking lot. Now, how would the flow go for Dover Intermediate School parents? They would still come into our lot and still drop off in front of Dover Intermediate School like they do now. When traffic backs up, instead of staying out on Dover Center Road, they can take the second lane and come into this parking lot, the main parking lot, and start to queue all the way around here. So we do pick up some additional queuing. We do have a nice length of safety fence up there for children to stay behind until they get to the crosswalks that are monitored. Also, in this location, we call this the four-way area here where the buses and cars come and go. We currently have a resource officer out there right now that helps direct traffic. It would still be our recommendation that that occurs in this location. In the back of our property, next slide, please. Where we have Bassett Road here along the bottom and we have our driveway coming in to the back of Bernisson Middle School right here, we were still recommending to put in two automated gates that would be timed as our time for our student drop off and student pickup, beginning and ending of the day. Finally, one of the things that we're working with the city on is a crosswalk that is a pedestrian automated signal that when a child or a pedestrian walks up to it, they hit the button, the flashers will come on to notify cars going in either direction that there's someone about to cross the road. The city's been really good with us. I've talked with Bob Kelly. Matter of fact, I got the pricing for our signal today, sixty-eight hundred dollars plus or minus. We purchased the signal. They put in our ADA ramps on our curbs. They do the striping on the street and we could get that rolling really quick. Now, this is what we'll call Phase One of the plan. And why is this better in price? Well, right now, we could do all of these individual pieces, fencing, sidewalk, installation of the automated gates, and the pedestrian signal without going to Planning Commission. There is no big hard surfaces. There are no lighting structures going in on our property that would require their approval. I had taken this plan to June Bedell, Director of Planning, and Mr. Van Dyke. They are aware of this and they like what we're doing. So much so that today is supposed to be the follow-up meeting for the Planning Commission of our original plan. I've asked them to pull that from the agenda because we have another direction that we wanted to go in. So they've decided to do that. We did send communication out to our neighbors within five hundred feet of the property. The letters went out last week just to inform them of where we're at with the project. I got one or two messages back for feedback. One was very happy that we were looking at this as a possible solution. Another one just wanted a little bit more information, which I gave them. Um, this also starts to mesh a little bit better with what we started to see the first three weeks of school. So one of the questions was, now that we're coming out of COVID, we got more kids on the bus. We do have the separation of the Bernisson parents in the back, the DIS parents in the front. What does the traffic look like? Three weeks into school, the traffic on Bassett Road looks good. I was personally out there many of the first two days, in the first two weeks. We've had building administrators out there. We have auxiliary police out there. The amount of time that they have to intervene to maybe even stop traffic to let somebody enter out has been between five and seven minutes of the afternoon, of the morning, I'm sorry. Afternoon traffic, all the cars get into our lot, onto our property. There's nobody out on Bassett Road.
Are we having to go up to that turnaround?
We are not.
Okay.
If you could go back possibly to the first slide, thank you, Todd. Thank you. Yeah, so right now, we are having them come in and just circle the back and then go back out. So we're not even using the queuing for that. Thank you. The, the traffic out on Dover Center Road, it does back up just a little bit slightly, but I will call that usual and ordinary, what we've seen the past eight years of running this traffic pattern through that campus. So, so far, everything has been looking pretty good. So we really wanted to focus on trying to solve that mingling of pedestrian traffic and the bus traffic in the front of our property. I said this is a two-phase. This was the first part of the phase. On the next slide, we have the second part. So again, Dover Center Road at the bottom, we have the north parking lot in front of Dover Intermediate School, the main lot, and then Lee Bernisson Middle School. In this second phase, it would be a proposal to make a right turn southbound onto Dover Center Road from our main parking lot. That would be for the parent's traffic. Why would we want to do this? As the parents come in and drop off their children, they come back out to the light. The light starts to stack up with all the parents and the buses trying to get through the light all at one time. When we looked at how the Westlake Elementary School project went and how traffic leaves that site, they have a, they have a right turn easterly onto Center Ridge Road from that property. So cars that are traveling in that direction will take that out. There's no light. You get more cars out of the main lighted traffic and get more cars off property easily. So in this scenario, if I'm a parent, I'm heading south or I'm possibly heading east or southeastern, southeasterly, I may choose to come in here to the main lot, drop my child off, and instead of coming back out to this intersection right here in the light, I'm gonna take this and blend right into traffic. What does that do here at our intersection? It reduces the amount of cars waiting for the light, lets more buses through, stops a little bit more of that intermingling traffic between bus and car. This part of the project, in talking to Mr. Bedell and Mr. Van Dyke, they feel that this would be something we probably would want to come back to the Planning Commission with. It is a larger improvement on our property. As I talk that through with them, this probably would be a little bit difficult still to get in before winter time and most likely would probably be better if we timed it for spring, both for pricing of asphalt, try to get on the construction team's project earlier in the process rather than rushing it in at the end and try to get a better price. One of the nice things about Phase One and Phase Two, we could go ahead and have Icon Construction bid the work out for us, find out what the pricing looks like, maybe even make this an alternate price. If the pricing looks really good, take advantage of it and still yet have them do it in the springtime. That is our latest update that we have to the project. Feel pretty good about this, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Yes?
Okay, with the automated gates on Bassett, because I, I went past it today. I don't remember what time, but they were, they were closed. And most of the time when I go past it, they are closed. Okay, how would that affect emergency vehicles in case of?
Yeah. Great, great question. The gates would be much like they are over at the elementary school, always closed. This would have a timer to let them open and close when they'd be seven to nine in the morning, two to four in the afternoon, or we could manually open them if we have a large event. For emergency vehicles, they have what's called either a chirp or a siren mode. When a ambulance, fire truck, police come up to it, they sound their horn and the gate will lift for them. We also have for the police department, a, I'll call it a garage door opener style button that they have in their cruisers, that if they want to come in silent, they press the button and the gate will go off for them.
Yes. Can you review bus traffic in, during Phase One and after Phase One and after Phase Two?
One more there. There you go. Right. So right now, buses come into our property. They'll line up starting here in front of Dover Intermediate School. They'll line up all the way here into the bus turnaround circle. Kids will come out, they'll get onto their buses, they'll release all at one time in the afternoon, come back out to the lights, and then head north or south on Dover Center Road. It will be identical in this phase. They'll still come in here, they will still park up into the bus lot, bus turnaround circle, and then come back out. What we're doing is we're creating a monitored crosswalk area to keep the pedestrians safe. We're trying to reduce the amount of cars leaving the main lot to mix with them. And with the reduction, hopefully, of the cars coming to the light, get them out of our property a little bit quick.
Okay.
Before you had mentioned of bidding it with Icon, do we have any estimates on what this would?
We do, we do. If you could go to the last slide, I believe. Great. So if you remember, the full project cost was one point one five two million for a separate bus lot. In Phase One and Phase Two, the new total is estimated at two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So it's greatly reduced the cost, mostly because of the reduction in the asphalt and concrete work that was needed for the main bus lot. There's also the reduction of the lighting for that bus lot, a lot of the buffering. So, so that price really does come down into something more manageable when we first started the discussion to try to create a safer, safer lot.
And this is before they bid it. This is their estimates, which typically are gonna be a little on the higher.
Right. Thank you. A very conservative, high estimate number. As you get bidders in there, especially if maybe work could be bid out a little bit in the future, you may get a little bit better number from, from the competition.
Will you be mailing this as well as the, the plan and phases to each of us?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I could do that tonight still.
Okay. And the pedestrian, the automated pedestrian system on Bassett, that would be really right off of the sidewalk that, that goes from the campus to Bassett.
Yes, absolutely. Matter of fact, Mr. Kelly, our city engineer, recommended the side, the end of the sidewalk right next to our driveway going into our property, felt that the lighted crosswalk there was garnishing the most attention from drivers coming and going at each way on Bassett.
Okay.
And is it within that school, school zone area?
Will it have a crosswalk, potentially even a crossing guard?
It will definitely have a crosswalk. We haven't spoke to the city yet about a man, personnel over at that crosswalk, but we will ask for that as well.
Okay, as long as there's an officer there, resting right now, it's fine. But if we remove that officer, we need somebody to help prosecute.
And that is, that's the, that is one of the reasons we're trying to have a pedestrian flashing signal. When there's not that ability to have somebody there, a child or a pedestrian can still go up to it, alert traffic that there's, that there's someone crossing, wait for them to stop and then cross. It is a little bit of a learning curve. We do have these around town right down the road on Hilliard in front of Clay Park. We have a signal right there.
Correct, but especially before and after school.
Right.
I think crossing guard is really essential.
Yeah, absolutely. That is primary if we could get some personnel on it. Yes.
Yeah, people that too, where your show. So it would be. Fencing of both sides of the road?
On one side.
So, so, I'm sorry. So the parents drop off. They pull in right there along, right there and they keep going up and then they try and they drop off anywhere in that area.
Anywhere in that area. So here's the sidewalk. Sidewalk continues all the way around. The fence is the blue dotted line that separates this sidewalk from the bus road.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
The one concern I have is still this, the chirp point.
Yes.
And I do think that the extra driveway for exiting will help.
Right.
And I'm sitting here and I'm looking at this and I'm wondering if we need to consider putting in a roundabout.
What did you say?
A roundabout. Um, just from the standpoint, I'm not saying in Phase One.
Right.
Let's see what happens. And this could even be potentially Phase Three, see how if we're able to peel off enough traffic going in one way, but if somebody has driven that enough.
Right.
It turns into a giant game of chicken and at least with a roundabout. It helps on, you know, and yes, there is a learning curve of how a roundabout works.
Right.
But just it's, it would, I think in many ways help some of that.
One of the things that complicates a roundabout in this area is our larger bus traffic.
Correct, you would be the larger.
That, that, right, uh car traffic much smaller, you have a little bit tighter radius. Um, that's why we felt that by managing it with an SRO, um, we could help direct the traffic on site with our own personnel. Um, to to let buses through and then let cars through.
As long as you've got that, that's our allow there, that's the biggest, they're not able to be there.
Right. And and then I I know that is something that is a concern and that that we've um been pushing to have. I know that they've been out there. Um, and I I think that's gonna continue with the uh. Yes.
Are there examples um out there somewhere in the broader community where the fencing is being used for that purpose?
You you know, we we have some decorative uh fencing. Uh, because we want something that'll look not nice, not just a chain link fence.
Right.
We do have some decorative fencing uh in a larger, taller scale over at our elementary school. The uh, the black decorative fencing that separates our courtyards uh in between our building sections would be one style. Um, there's a lot of different styles out there. And quite frankly, uh one of the reasons to potentially bid and to offer different alternatives. Are to see if we can find something that's both economic and still good looking and and resilient to use. Um, we're we're debating whether it's a three foot or a four foot fence. And what would withstand our, oh, say plowing in winter weather.
Sure.
So we'll we'll land on something that both looks good and that would withstand our children and weather.
Corner Library has some ornamental fencing around their retention basin.
Right.
And then there's some businesses, um. I think uh near where Steinmark used to be, that that strip of, I, they just put a new, is it a daycare center, something in there? And there's decorative fencing there, but I'd recommend a four foot fence, cause I think, I think that students might still be.
Climbing.
Hurbling.
Yeah, you know, you you try to give first the visual. And then you you understand that that, you know, children, children will be children, you know, they'll, some will just hop it, hop over. Um, we want to look at something that's gonna be um resilient. You know, we are gonna be plowing, having snow up against it, a smaller fence sometimes might not be as strong as a little bit taller one with some. Um, thicker posts, so we'll definitely have something engineered that'll work both for our need and for the, for the site.
Questions or comments?
I think, going back from the lead discussion, this is a lot more economical and it does start to separate. Some of the, the traffic. But that, you're you're right, was that that one little pinch point there. People drop off at D I S and try to turn left and get out, unless they get a very friendly other parent. Pretty hard to to get out there, especially if you're fucking, if you're late, you're fighting with some of the buses. So that would be great that there's a. It will, it will be either for more than a half hour.
It, you know, twenty minutes seems to get most of the folks um in and out of the site.
And we're foreseeing that by fall twenty-two, this will be more likely complete.
Yeah, Phase One, um, if if bid, and we could probably get a lot of Phase One completed prior to winter. Um, if not all of it. Phase Two again, because asphalt plant's closing in in November, um, early to mid-November. And just to get the design locked down to make sure it meets all the requirements, planning and zoning itself would take another month or two to go through. So it really does give us time for Phase Two to get something um priced out uh for a spring or possibly early summer. Early summer um um installation. You know, one of the things that we've been watching is our traffic. Um, you know, if 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 Phase One takes care of everything. You know, i- is there a possible need for Phase Two, you know? I- i- at that winter time and the development of what that drive might look like. You know, there may be more information that comes to us that that has us even reconsider that, but. Um, I I do know that the reduction in that four-way intersection on our site. And the reduction at the light would be ideal. That would be the ideal uh solution to try to get those folks turning right onto Dover Center Road.
Is Phase Two involved any um? A water runoff, um drainage, we'll have to do a little bit of that?
No, you know, the the site that had Dover Elementary School on it had a lot of impervious. Um, uh, uh, impervious um conditions on it, we had parking lots, we had roofs. Lot of water that didn't go into the ground, all that's out, it's all green space. The amount of hard surface that we're gonna put back in for a possible driveway extension is minimal to what was taken out. Um, believe that there won't be any additional water calculations that we would need to add to it. Um, so we should be pretty good there.
Separate but related, um, it, uh, we see that Dover, old Dover Elementary School. Uh, area, it's it's being well maintained and cut and uh, sounds like things are fine over there, right?
Think, things are fine, we have one object still left in the yard that is going to be coming out when the Bassett equipment. Uh, gets out of Bassett Elementary School for the demo of that. There's a a light, there's not a light pole, there's a utility pole that's gonna come out of that uh, out of that um, um, area. But yes, we're we're mowing it, maintaining it, it's nice green space right now. Um, and and we're more than happy with that.
Awesome, thanks.
I like the price better than the first one.
Mr. Kozvar, while you're here, can you give us a update on how things progressing over at that?
It it's going very well, um, they've uh, they've taken the complete structure down. Um, the last time I was there, which was the end of last week, they had a lot of the foundations um uprooted out of the ground. Um, they're still separating some of the materials on site. Um, our, our, our security fencing is still around the site with the equipment within that. Um, I I would say they probably have another couple, uh, two, three weeks. Uh, to get the rest of that material out of there. And then to backfill and then put in some erosion control prior to winter time. So they're they're, they're, they're getting close to the end of the project. Um, probably about another two, three weeks and they should be uh zeroing in on it.
So early in October, playing grass?
I I would say probably mid-October would be a great timeframe, yes.
Anything else?
So when, when do you start? Have you set it?
So the way that this project will move forward is, uh, if there's no objections from board, uh, we would uh work with Icon to bid this. Uh, instead of doing a a GMP based on the pricing that they've estimated on, we're gonna ask them to bid first. And so normally that's about a three-week time window. We'll nail down some of the specific specifics about the fencing with the architect that we're working with, the engineer firm, engineering firm. And then we can have that bid maybe three to four weeks out from now. So probably in uh, the the first, maybe second meeting in October, we'll come back to the board. Uh, for an official vote on a GMP amendment uh with Icon that will lay out what we're doing. With that money and exactly what that costs.
Very good. And soon we'll be running against weather, right, to uh, so maybe spring before we start some of this.
Oh, no, I I I think we could get uh quite a, quite a bit of the Phase One completed. Um, like again, maybe if not all of it, so, okay.
With with normal Cleveland weather, uh, because we're not looking specifically at asphalt or uh major concrete work. You'll have some work with your uh fence posts and stuff, but uh, or the sidewalk, but with normal Cleveland weather, there's usually, knock on wood. Uh, we have enough breaks uh before the end of the the calendar year. That something like this should be able to be accomplished before the end of the calendar. Um, now, if we have heavy weather setting in, in, you know, the end of October. And it's there for November and December, well, that would be a different situation, but it was typical weather that we've experienced in the past. We believe that assuming materials are available, we'd be able to get uh, uh, the majority of this, uh, if not all of Phase One done by the end of the calendar year.
Very good. Okay, any other comments? Questions? Thank, thank you, Mr. Kozvar.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's move on to the next item, which is the bond refinancing update.
I I just want to say publicly very quick, uh, I do want to thank Mr. Kozvar for, again, being here tonight. Uh, people don't understand all the time, uh, you know, the amount of work and effort that not only Mr. Kozvar does in the background, all of our administrative team. And uh, Mr. Kozvar has been working on this project for a while now. And it's included, uh, you know, meeting with our our stakeholders, our residents around the area. He's been the sounding board for a lot of our residents, uh, he has been the lead on this project uh for many, many, many months. And uh, we do appreciate the work and and appreciate all the time.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, I I just wanted to give you an update on our bond refinancing, uh, we are moving forward with our bond refinancing. Um, last week, uh, I had a ratings call with Moody's. Um, if you, uh, if the board remembers, a few months ago, um, we had a uh evaluation that was done by Moody's. Um, when you're, when you're rated on your, uh, by one of the rating agencies, S C P or or Moody's. Uh, we have bonds that are held by each, uh, are rated by each of the companies. Every so often, at at their whim essentially, they can uh evaluate us to see if they wanted to affirm the rating. Or if they needed to adjust the rating up or down. So uh, we did go through that rating uh, evaluation a few months ago. And we were uh reaffirmed at the double A one, which is the highest double A rating that you can receive. Uh, we're very happy with that, and I think it is very reflective of uh, the fiscal responsibility of the Board of Education. Um, so we had this ratings call last week. It was a relatively quick call and and to be very honest, the analyst with Moody's is, hey, we just reevaluated all of this just a few months ago. So has anything really changed? And honestly, the only thing that has changed is we are actually financially uh better off than we were, than we had estimated in our forecast. Um, beforehand, so uh, we see no reason why our ratings would, our rating would drop. As we look to uh, uh, refinance and hopefully we'll have the official rating uh later this week and I'll send that uh to the board once we have that. Um, assuming everything rolls uh well with the rating, we are well on our way with what's called the preliminary official statement, the the POS. Which will ultimately become our official statement of our uh bonds. Uh, this is a very long uh, uh, book almost that uh is basically a uh. Mr. Kraft, I think I would call it kind of a prospectus for our bonds. As people can review what uh, what they're investing in in Westlake City Schools. So it talks about our finances, it talks about some of our academics, it talks about history of the district, it talks about, you know, the surrounding area, the community. And that's all of this that we've been uh working on putting together over the past couple of months. Um, things are rolling along so that we'd be looking at doing a pricing um, on on the bonds on September twenty-eighth. So a a little later here, another uh two weeks from tomorrow, we'd be looking at doing the the pricing. We are working with two um. Investment firms, bond firms, uh, we're working with R B C Capital, uh, who we've done uh work with before. Uh, and we're also working with Stiefel, uh, who we've done work with before and I worked with before on another a project. Um, one of the benefits that I like with Stiefel, and I'll be asking Dr. Goggins to uh put in what some of our newsletters is. Stiefel has a retail office here in Westlake. So if there are people who are interested in investing in the bonds of Westlake City School District and uh, they're local, they can certainly work with their. Uh, 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 investment manager or their, their financial uh manager. Uh, or they could contact Stiefel, the local office, I think it's right on Detroit Road. Um, and you can work with Stiefel to look at buying bonds directly on the twenty-eighth. Um, if you don't buy on the twenty-eighth, you can always still invest in bonds with Westlake City Schools, but at that point, it's then done on the secondary market. Uh, but the initial sale will be done on the twenty-eighth and we're looking at closing a few weeks after that at some point in October. Um, so that's kind of how the process is laid out right now. Uh, it's coming along very well, the rates have stayed uh in a very favorable favorable fashion for us and. Knock on wood, and uh, we pray that we, those, those rates will continue for the next couple of weeks uh to be favorable. Uh, as a reminder, bond refinancing, uh unlike a home mortgage refinancing where you may lower your mortgage. And therefore have more money on a monthly basis in your personal mortgage. Bond refinancing does not have a direct financial benefit to the school district itself. Okay, uh, by reducing the amount of money that's paid over the long term on the bonds. It's not money that comes into our checking account, into the coffers of the district. It's not a vacation fund for me to go on or anything like that. Uh, what this does, we do this to be uh, fiscally responsible to the community, to each of you here as taxpayers. To our business owners, because over the long term, by return, by reducing the amount of debt. Uh, principal and interest that we would ultimately be paying as the taxpayers, you will pay less. Uh, in uh your taxes over the long term. So we do this as a uh, uh, because it's the right thing to do for our community. And uh, right now with rates being so low, with them, with the majority of our bonds becoming callable right now to where we can reissue them. At tax exempt rates, um, it provides a prime opportunity to do this. And uh, uh, we are rolling along uh, on this process and will uh be moving along uh over the next few weeks. Uh, the board has already given permission to do all of this, um, and authority is granted authority of, I'll check with uh, R B C and Stiefel. Uh, but uh, Dr. Stole, I believe, I set, scheduled some time with you. As typically you and I will be the ones who will sign off on the bond sale.
Okay.
Um, so I will get some dates on when they, um, uh, or times when they need us to sign off on this. Um, but that's where we are with the the process, we'll get that information out about the bond sale on twenty-eighth. Uh, some of the information, contract information for Stiefel uh Retail's off, retail office. But again, anyone, uh, anyone who listens to this on the internet, uh, and will get information out, you can also work with your investment advisor. But um, you can, uh, if you don't have an investment advisor, or if you prefer to work with Stiefel directly with the retail office here in Westlake, it becomes very confusing. So that's where we are with.
And we'll say thank you, Mr. Hopkins and your entire office. And you've talked about the rating and we appreciate your financial leadership and that of the office and bringing us to where we are as a district, so thank you.
Thank you, we're, you know, this is a fantastic district, uh, the district as a whole, led by the Board of Education, has shown the fiscal responsibility. Uh, long-term and so it 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 reflects in our rate, so thank you, back to you and the entire board. Absolutely. Yeah, so, you know, what we'll do is, and and that's very easy to put together, cause we'll have those hard numbers on the, on the pricing day, the, the date of sale there. Um, you know, it it's, I'll be very upfront and be honest with all of you is, uh, you know, it's going to be. A very large number, okay, but when you say, okay, what does it mean to me as the homeowner, okay? It may be a savings of a few dollars a year on what you pay on your, on your taxes. The idea is those few dollars that you pay on your home. And all of the other property in Westlake pays on their homes and the commercial property adds up to millions and millions and millions of dollars. So while it may not be, you know, uh, someone may look at it and say, oh geez, you know, my hundred thousand dollar house, I'm only saving three dollars a year. Well, I understand that, but I would rather have you keep that money than it going to being paid interest that we don't have to pay.
Is this the second or is this our third?
Uh, well, we remember that the first couple that we've done have been bond sales, not necessarily refinancing. So uh, this is the first refinancing that we've done here since I've been here, it's my sixth year, sixth year here. So this is the first refinancing that we've done here since I've been here, this is my sixth year, sixth year here. You did one in twenty fourteen, I believe, I came in twenty sixteen. And so we are looking at even the issues that we, the twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen issues that we did for the new elementary school. Because of the way we were able to price them with a short call date on, a four or five year call date on, we're able to actually refinance some of those now. And rates are better than they were five years ago, four, five years ago, so we're able to benefit. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Next up is board comments, I have a few that I'll kick off with. Just a few dates and reminders, this Wednesday, September fifteenth, at nine AM is the Westlake Council PTA meeting. Followed by Thursday, the sixteenth, the Alumni Hall of Fame Dinner, is it Wagner's of Westlake? That's at six thirty in the evening, unfortunately I can't make that, I have an evening class. And then this Friday is homecoming with the homecoming parade and football.
Also Friday morning is the kindness run walk for L B M S.
Okay.
Do you know a lot about that?
Yes.
Could you tell us a little bit about it?
I have been put in charge of it.
You must know a lot about it.
Yes, it starts at nine AM, I'm in charge of it from the P T A side, this is Barry's one, I just let, told side. Starts at nine AM in the back lot of L B M S, basically they go out, pass the road into Chadwick. Into the development there, it's about a mile and a quarter altogether and back. So you're welcome to come out and cheer on the kids while they run or walk.
And most are all, the students are participating?
They are all going out.
Nice, I like that, good work.
It was something that they started, I want to say three years ago, and they continued it even during the pandemic, sort of a virtual, you know, go out.
Super. Friday, Friday we're meeting, like no later than five at the L B M S.
L B M S parking lot?
Yep, I got the candy.
Thanks.
You think you have enough? Thirty pounds? I saw the picture of it, I thought, oh my God, we'll be fine.
Any other comments?
Just general, okay, I, I don't want to spend more than maybe five minutes on this, but we have talked about brainstorming on what to do with the auxiliary gym. I did have an opportunity to chat with Dan Doyle, who is involved with the Citizens Advisory Committee looking for. An opportunity to engage with the board on some things and that's one thing that he had, he had mentioned. But we chatted about it a little bit before, any, any brainstorming thoughts when it comes to the auxiliary gym?
I've heard Avon Lake has a really good setup for storage.
Ah, alright.
I think it might be worth going over and checking that out.
Sure. Anything else?
I'd really love to get some feedback from the coaches also.
Okay.
We, when Dave and I went through the facilities, it was Coach LaRocco. There's definitely a need for additional locker room space because the way they're practicing L B M S football team, they're coming over. And right now they're just changing in the gym. In that auxiliary gym in the field house, so.
Potentially that idea.
No, one of the things that Coach LaRocco had asked to do, I know he worked with Mr. Cipollone and Dr. Gagen. Is to help build the program up as kids go into the high school, get them on the same page of, of play calls and stuff. That they do spend a portion of practice together before they split out into their separate teams, so they do it at the high school facility.
Again, so potentially locker rooms and/or storage. And the visit to Avon Lake, can you talk more about that? I'd love to see it.
And especially if we move graduation to the field going forward, having the field house with another locker room. And a women's restroom makes more restrooms available for something like. Large events like graduation.
Okay.
Just, just putting my plug in for graduation field.
Okay, thank you.
Well, when we were talking about the problem with the. The behavior at the football games with student behavior, is that something that the principals are going to deal with? I mean, I know a couple of years ago, they definitely sent out a lot of information that, you know, the elementary kids sit with their parents. And, and then they divided, divided the other, this and, and the middle school kids up. But I, I think if there's a problem with it, we should definitely. Well, we were just talking about the kids are running, running around and. Little bit, I, I don't know, there wasn't an incident, was there? Nothing, nothing that.
Just.
It's, it's, yeah, yeah, so it could, I mean, it could evolve into something.
Yeah, usually, and they may be there, probably, I know, usually the principal, vice principal are usually there along with. Actually, both of us.
And one from.
There was a full staffing from the high school and then I know it was Bailey from D I S. So they did have. Isn't the elementary kids that? I, I think there's a general, you know, let's just check it on what's going on. Well, I, I plan on being at the, the game on Friday, so. I don't know if everybody else is planning to stay for the full game, but I'm saying.
I am unable.
Um, when we were doing the facility tour, it definitely sounds like we need another truck before winter hits. For plowing purposes, I don't know if that's something.
So that is something that in our finance committee meeting that we have scheduled for next week, Mr. Postvar is going to present some of the capital improvement needs and wants. Over the next few years that he's projected out, a truck is one of those. To give you a fair warning, we have asked Mr. House, our Transportation Director, to get a state pricing on a new truck. We know that last time, we, last year when we ordered a truck. You know, although the state contracts has ninety-day delivery time, it ended up being more like a hundred and twenty days. This year I expect it to take even longer, so it may not be something we can have before winter. Just because of way the, the market is for vehicles right now. But we are trying to get ahead of the curve a little bit and make sure we have something ordered soon.
Glad that's on the agenda for this week.
Any other comments? I have a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Roll call.
To adjourn at six fifty-nine PM, correct?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Zinski?
Yes.
Kieran?
Yes.
Stole?
Yes.
Motion carries.